Persistent, low-achieving schools, and it has to be a PLOS Tier 1 school. And so you have in front of you a matrix that research has put together that indicates the schools above that line that are qualifiers for Tier 1, based on NDE requirements. Now, on top of NDE requirements, prior to making a recommendation to the school board, we added in some other things that I believe are inclusive of K-1 indicators, which are not NDE requirements, and other considerations such as principal tenure. For example, if our principal's only been in the school two years, or even if they're going on their third year, well, that wouldn't, you wouldn't keep them in that group because you're just now moving there. Also, programmatic changes. Were there some of those qualifying groups that are having programmatic changes? For example, are they blending in another school? Like, is Saratoga going to Druid Hill? And is that going to be a pretty significant shift in that, in that climate as you merge those two schools? So we took into those considerations, too. Yesterday, I went all, I went through all this data with all of our principals because I wanted them to know what was going to be discussed at the board table. Well, I did get a lot of feedback. They shared a lot with me. I see Dr. York back there, one of our principals. They had a lot of questions. But you know, these are, these are big issues. Because when you do a school improvement grant, you're looking at potentially changing the staff, or at least half of them, in some cases. You're looking at change in the principal. So the principals had a lot of questions. I think we answered them pretty well, but the questions were like, how will, how will this work with teachers? How will they be moved? What are the repercussions for removing the leader and staff from a high-need building? Is this research-based? Have, have principals been encouraged to visit our, our low-performing schools and see that there are more than numbers? How were the schools selected? What does the, what does the online rubric mean? Help me understand the rubric a little bit better. What are, what are the concerns about early childhood if we're adding that? Does that impact it? How will, how will the movement of administrators work? Do we still have, do our teachers still have their jobs? Has the board voted on the SIG yet? Have they voted, voted on it before? My staff has anxiety. How do we help them with the anxiety that they're, they're under right now? Staff and parents are asking questions. They want to know answers to where we're headed. Will the principal be required to move? Is, is it a legal requirement of the grant? And the list kind of goes on and on, but that gives you a flavor of the questions I think I answered for about, oh, I don't know, 40 minutes, I think I was standing there with the mic trying to answer all those questions. And I think we kind of have answers to them. I really do. I think we kind of have answers to all those questions. And by the way, those are legitimate questions from concerned people, trying to figure this out. So I listed a whole lot of questions off, but I actually have answers that I think to all of those. But it doesn't necessarily answer the anxiety issue, because any time you're making a major shift, these are individuals. These are people. They have lives, and they have thoughts about where they're going to be next year and how that can impact it. So they're very interested in what happens tonight at the school board. I want you to know that. I certainly heard that loud and clear from our principals. But as I shared with them, the board's intent, and I really believe this, is it's an opportunity to capture some dollars that will help revitalize a school. And we used a rubric that included a whole lot of indicators to come up with a recommendation. So we do have a recommendation, but before we get that, do you want to share anything about the rubric that maybe I, you probably have some details I don't have, Mr. Scott?
Sure. Absolutely. I can speak just very briefly to some of the indicators. As Mr. Evans indicated, we do have some basic demographic information relative to the school, including the tenure of the principal, the average daily attendance of the school, lunch percentage, mobility, ELL percentage, special education percentage, et cetera. Then we move into assessment data. Now, the indicators you'll see scattered throughout this document in the form of asterisks and carats are summed over to the far right, which is on the second page. And I'm sorry how small this was formatted. We tried to fit it into the document. It didn't quite work as well as we had hoped. But we wanted you to see all the information, and for all involved parties and interested community members to be able to see kind of what went into our academic status indicators. So we have a number of indicators that were used. And something to mention, wherever possible, we used a three-year average of assessment results to get a more stable metric by which to make these indications. We tried also to be very clear in our labeling to show exactly what was occurring there and the means by which a school would be given an indicator. So as was indicated, we have assessment data that stretches from K to 2 for the district development measure, and then 3 through 6 for NESA. So that gives us K through 6 worth of achievement data for considerations. In these considerations, we compared the school's outcomes to a baseline, so the first year or years, using the average, that a school took a given test, be it reading or math for NESA. We also did a comparison in several instances to a district average. So how was that school relative to how the district was performing in those areas? So that is a consideration. And when you look across them, you'll also note that we, we included growth to look at what does the average student's life look like in these schools, and how are they progressing? We wanted to include that information and felt it was very useful as well. And then with reference to the K-2 data, we looked at pre-post scores, post-score outcomes across those grades, kindergarten, first grade, and second grade. Where indicators were met, those comparisons were made, and a school reached a level of being indicated. Those indicators were summed to the far-right column, the second one, from the far-right, I should say, and that's the academic status indicator. Last point I'll make is just relative to the weightings. For NESA, each item in reading was given a two-point weight. That's based on the foundational need for reading achievement and for students to be good at reading, to learn the object, other subject areas. NESA math was weighted one point per indicator. And just so that those, K-2 indicators didn't outweigh those for NESA, those are weighted at half a point each. I believe those are all the complexities. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them relative to the metric that was presented.
Mr. Evans? Or does anybody have any question in specific?
The matrix.
Okay. Do you want to go ahead and give us that?
If there's no questions on the matrix, we can go to the recommendation. As a result of the matrix and all those indicators that Scott just described to us, could we open up that, the other document, and then kind of describe what the recommendation is? Okay. See if I can get that opened. Thank you, Mr. Ray. Okay, so we looked at the criteria, and again, looked at other pieces such as teacher tenure, or teacher tenure, such as principal tenure, how long had they been in the building, programmatic shifts, and those factors. And with all those factors inclusive, as well as everything else in that rubric, our recommendation for 2014, 2015 is Wakanda with a turnaround model. And I know Jocelyn's here to describe all of those pieces of a turnaround model and what that requires. Jocelyn, you might want to step, step up, just, just in case we have some questions on the turnaround model and what that means for that school, because it is pretty significant. I think we all know, and by the way, I have met with the Wakanda staff, so they are familiar that we're having the conversation today. And as, kind of as the principal mentioned there, there's some anxiety with that, and understandably, because not sure what's going to happen. But we had a good conversation, and I think they're, they're understanding of where we're going. But the turnaround model that is recommended with Wakanda includes the change of leadership. Principal has to be changed. And I believe the other factors, and Jocelyn, I'm going to ask you to, to help me with this, make sure I don't forget any piece. I believe part of it is a 50% change in the staff, which I believe is, is completed by, the existing staff can reapply, but no more than half can be hired. What other factors? I know those are the two big ones that I'm getting the most questions about from the principal and the teachers, and from other principals and teachers who aren't on the recommendation list, but they also saw that their name was a part of the eligible schools. So you have questions from those folks as well, who I know, who I know are watching tonight. So I want to make sure we're giving all the information to a lot of folks who are watching this conversation and wondering what's going to happen. So, Jocelyn, what are the other elements there of a turnaround model for an SIG application?
You have approximately eight. You have to replace the principal. You screen all of your existing staff, and you can rehire no more than 50% of that staff. You select new staff. You provide high-quality professional development. You adopt a governance structure that monitors, which would be your intervention project manager, to make sure that everyone's meeting their goals. You use data to identify your instructional program and make sure that it's vertically aligned from one grade to another. You promote the continuous use of data, which we do. You establish strategies to increase learning time. That may be adding days to summer school. That may be adding before-after-school programs. And you also provide social, emotional, and community-oriented services for students.
So I guess, as you can see, it's pretty significant. I mean, we're going to have a, a pretty fast turnaround. One, the application has to be turned in, I believe, by the end of this month, maybe the first of March. We've, we've heard the feds may give us a little extension. Is that accurate?
Yes. So far, it's not been posted yet, and I've talked to NDE, and they're still waiting on approval of their application. So it may be pushed back a little further, at least till the middle of March.
So we've got a little bit of time, but it's going to be a, a pretty rapid pace. And obviously, the teachers, the principal in this case, they're very interested where, where are we headed? I mean, that's why I gave you some of those lists of questions that I heard from our principals yesterday morning. So they're very interested in, in moving forward very quickly and figuring this out. So it's going to be a pretty rapid turnaround to get the grant written. And then we actually don't know if we receive it. I believe it's April when we get notification. Approximately April is what, what we've been told. Is that right?
Right. If they move it back a little bit because of the notification, it may be April, late May.
So lots of pieces to a pretty complex puzzle to get done in a pretty rapid rate. But on the other hand, part of the reward on this is you do get additional dollars and funds to help with this turnaround initiative. So you're going to have some resources to apply to the situation. You're going to have a pretty significant shift in who's at the school, from not only who's leading, but also instruction in the school, if you do an SIG. And so that's, that's where we're at on year one, and I'm going to move to year two, just in the sake of time here. The second-year recommendation is Kennedy Elementary. And again, this is a conversation that we've had at the board table now, gosh, I think for at least a month and a half, two months. And what I've heard from the community and group that's, that's been working on the Kennedy proposal and 75 North issue is they'd like more time. They see that as a more comprehensive shift. And so that's what I've heard from, from the Kennedy group, from parents, from teachers, principal, and the committee that works, including 75 North staff. And then after that, you can see year three then, use the criteria, use principal appraisal process, school performance data, to move on past, past after year three. So, so that's kind of where we are after moving quickly after last month where the board asked us to come back with a recommendation. So that's, that's what we have now, and we'll stand for question.
Mr. Vargas?
Quick. Question was around principal appraisal. Can we hear more about the role that principal appraisal played, played in selecting these school, recommending these schools for this? And, yeah, that's a question. First question.
I'll take a point of order on that. Because it singles out two schools and possibly two principals, there's probably personnel issues that shouldn't be addressed publicly without giving them a fair opportunity to whether they want that publicly or not.
Right, I agree.
I'll change my question then. Because it shouldn't apply just to the two, two schools. So the question is, what role do principal appraisal play in the overall guidance of the selection process, which should be equally applied to all the schools on this list? Less so an individual school?
See if I can, let me see if I can get, take a shot at it, and I'll refer to the EDs and Dr. Kerber if I make, make a mistake here. I think we just now feel like we're getting a principal appraisal process in place with consistency, which is why we started the EDs program, because here's what's happened in the past. And I think everyone's kind of aware of this. Different people did principal appraisal, and they weren't always, they were always different people, and it was always done, I don't want to say always inconsistent, but I think the consistency wasn't there. So we feel like we're just now getting that to the point where we feel confident that we have consistency in application. So what we looked at was principal tenure. Well, you saw the rubric. We look at principal tenure, but then we looked at all the state assessment scores. We looked at all those other student success indicators, including, as Scott said, looking at three-year trend averages, not just a single data point, but doing trend averages. So those were the pieces, because we felt like those were the most solid pieces, and they also were required by the State Department. So, pretty minimal on the other piece in this year, which is why we have it as a recommendation in year three. We think it has, going to have more value with the consistency. I don't know if there's anything I missed. Is that pretty accurate?
Okay. Does anyone else have any other questions on this? Ms. Fay.
So I'm, I think maybe like Mr. Vargas, I'm really interested in how that year three starts shaping up as a way to identify support for our lower, lower-performing schools, and what that looks like as we spread it out from one school, two schools, to how we can provide a systematic support for those schools, incorporating the principal appraisal process, but also perhaps school climate surveys, teacher evaluations, all those other pieces that we have in addition to test scores that we know affect student achievement. So I'm really interested in seeing that piece grow. And then I'm glad to hear that you're in communication with Kennedy regarding that 2015-16 application. I, I want to make sure before we do that, that, that fits with wherever that school is going. I, I'm not really comfortable saying, yes, Howard Kennedy is the next school, because I don't know what the proposal that's been submitted by 75 North looks like, and so I, I don't know if that fits with that. I don't feel like I have enough information for that. I do really want to thank you for presenting the school improvement grants. I think you used the word opportunity. I've fielded some of the phone calls from anxious staff members and, who also happen to be constituents, and was able to give them a lot more information. I think it's critical that going forward, we're just really direct and very upfront, and present it as an opportunity for the students and for the success of the school, because that's really what it's all about. It's not about punishing buildings or staff. It's about doing what we need to do for the success of the students in that school. And that's, we need to really refine our message about presenting it as an opportunity for everybody, that there's going to be additional support for the staff in that building in the form of all those things that Jocelyn referred to, and that this is going to benefit everybody. So I think that that's, I would like to see us be really upfront and early with any schools that, in particular, potential schools for the turnaround model, but for any interventions that we do. So thank you for using that word.
Are there any other questions? I'm sorry, Mr. Wayne.
Where, where is OEA in this process? Because I know in some of the SIG, and I'm trying to figure out, I'm looking at guidelines, they have a signature line in some of the, that are submitted. I don't know if that's here, but I know in some other states it's, it's required. I'm just asking, have we engaged them yet in this process?
I think the signature line is if you do, I think there's a waiver request. If you do a performance piece, I think one of the elements, I can't remember what page it's on in that document, but there's a page in there that talks about performance, pay, and you'd have to do a waiver to do that, and that would require negotiated agreement waiver.
Okay. The second question I have is, one of the things in, in the turnaround model, it talks about, to Mr. Vargas's fancy term, this new governance structure of this school has to report to a new turnaround office, or hire a turnaround leader who directly reports to the superintendent or chief academic. And this is under the, the must-do the following. Where's that going to be?
We haven't written the grant yet. We haven't gotten, we haven't been given approval to identify all those elements, but if the board gives us approval, that's what we'll start working on, is identifying all those pieces, parts, and elements of that with, with your approval. If that's where you want us to head, and we'll come back with all that information prior to submission. Because you have to, we, we would look at that prior to submission, which is going to be sometime either late February or early March. So that's what we'd come back with, is all details. We've not, we've not figured all the pieces and parts out. That's what, that's next step. Next step is putting that down and bringing that back to you for approval prior to submission.
Thank you.
And that was one of the things that Jocelyn mentioned in the, was it eight or nine items, was that officer as well. Did you have a question, Mr. Vargas? Okay.
More of a statement. Unless somebody else has more questions. Okay. So I want to be honest or blunt about this, because this is a, one, this is my line of work, but, but two, enough research backs up effective turnaround school practices that I don't think we are employing or considering. We're about to apply for a significant amount of money, a grant, that holds us accountable to a certain set of things that we don't do in this district, or we have not done historically. Taking, removing a principal and putting in a new principal, that's, you know, I've seen that being effective practice in school districts, but we have not done that practice. The reason why I ask about principal appraisal, we have not figured out a fair way to evaluate principals consistently over many years. We're doing that now. I, I do think we're steps in the right direction, but we need to establish what we're doing with that in addition to this. We are, we haven't evaluated our capacity. One of the key tenets of doing school turnaround is evaluating the capacity of the district and what we don't do well. I think we've identified some of the things we do well, but we're not identifying what we don't do well. In the application for this grant, it specifically asks us a huge component that says, include the evaluation of your capacity, your proficiency to be able to, you know, improve, you know, have quality staff at these new schools. That assumes that we can then identify 50% new teachers to be in this school that are somehow employing different practices to be part of a turnaround school. I don't think we've adopted a strategy for that. I don't think we've, we've, we've considered the performance management changes we would need to do that. Our local education agency ability is another component that we need to write down. I don't know if our board is yet informed or educated on the capacity or the ability for our district to, that, what we're not doing well to do this work. The grant specifically asks you to identify what you don't have the capacity for. We haven't, we haven't done an audit of that. Stakeholder commitment is a key component of this as well. I think we're just hearing from our stakeholders, and I don't think we've done a very effective job of that. I think that's part of the reason why we're even seeing Kennedy say, we need another year, because we want to make sure we're doing it right. I think this is the right step we need to head towards. But we're not, we have not audited our current district practices to identify what we're not doing well, to then be able to actually do it dramatically different to support these schools and do right by these dollars. Research shows you that we need to identify a comprehensive strategy to turn around schools in a district, and that is on the district's shoulders, to identify that strategy. It's on the board's shoulders to identify, and as governance, to support that strategy and do it in a fair, in a fair way. And I think that's, to your point, Ms. Fay, you talked about climate surveys. I don't think we have enough data to sort of give us holistically where each school is. And other, other predictors, climate surveys, parent evaluations, student surveys, that's going to give us more information on, on what's happening at a school. We need some things like that. We need strategic, we need ways to bring in more talent into our district. Bringing turnaround principals and identifying and training them within our district requires new efforts. We're doing some of that, but we also have to consider opening the pipeline into recruiting. That's a new practice. We are applying for something that we have not yet, we've, we've not, we don't know. The district, the board doesn't know yet what we can and cannot do. And we're about to apply in a month for $2 million-plus dollars to say we can do it. That's a problem. I think we need to step back, I'm urging our board to create a comprehensive strategy for school turnaround, consider creating a school turnaround office, identify our lowest-performing schools, have a five-year plan for turning these schools around over the next five years in a sustainable way, and then implement it into our strategic plan.
Ms. Williams?
I have a question, sorry.
So what I've heard from, and I just want to make sure that I'm understanding, and I agree, though, from Mr. Vargas and Mrs. Fay, that we need to have some process. But I guess ultimately, we have a decision to make today, is do we or do we not apply for the SIG grant? I do think that we do need to have a process, so I, if we're going to do it, I would rather look at one school and worry about year two. As we're going, we're figuring out a process, I would rather err on the side of the caution. But if memory serves, the last board meeting that we talked about the SIG grant, I heard more people saying, we need to apply for more schools, but now I'm hearing the opposite, so I'm confused. What are we doing? Are we going to apply for the SIG grant for a school, or for two schools, or what are we actually doing? I mean, I'm, I'm kind of like, now I don't know what the whole conversation is, the, the conversation that we had prior to now, because I'm getting conflicting commentary and, and questions. So ultimately, we need to figure out tonight if we're going to vote to apply for the SIG grant, and for if it's year one and year two, or if it's year one. I mean, I think that's the question at the table now. We don't have very much time, and I understand the process part, and I, and I get that, but it's almost conflicting that, okay, well, we, we can't do it, but we should do it, but we don't want to be highlighted as we're not going after the dollars and we're not doing. So what are we going to do? That's the end-of-the-day conversation. What are we going to do today with the SIG grant?
So I'm going to go to Mr. Wayne's question, and then I'll call for a motion.
So, reading through the Q and As and all this, and this is a great book that, you know, existed or, you know, one of the things it says, that if we apply for one, we have to take care of all Tier 1 schools unless we demonstrate we don't have the capacity. Even though we're going to just do one, when I'm reading this, and I could, I'm skimming, so I could be wrong, so I'm leaving to you guys, the experts. But my question is more for the Student Assignment Plan Committee. If they're Tier 1 schools, and we decide to take one school, and we have to in some way serve all, I guess, let me background my question. If we take this money, does that change our student assignment plan? Because don't, don't all students in Tier 1 get a priority for choice? And if it does, then that will fundamentally change our student assignment plan, because those eight schools get to go somewhere else, no matter what, if there's an opening? Is that correct? I mean, I'm asking, is that correct?
Mr. Wayne, may I ask what document you're looking at?
The...
Are you looking at the regulatory guidance?
Yeah.
Okay. First of all, let me preface that a lot of that regulatory guidance is meant for the state educational agency. It does drill down to give guidance for the local education agency, but because the state is applying to the Department of Ed, most of the guidance is leaning toward them. So when you're talking about schools, very simply put, the funding priority is for Tier 1 schools. That's what they're going to favor in the application. The selection of those schools is totally up to this district.
No. Okay, I guess what I want us to make sure that we research is that my understanding of the SIG grant is, once you have a number of schools in Tier 1, unless you can't serve them due to capacity issues, you should apply to other ones, or, or somehow serve all of them. If that's true, and it could be false, I just want to make sure that if we pass this and go off and apply, that we don't change our student assignment plan, because I, I'm pretty sure Tier 1 gets priority over any other thing that we have for choice.
That's correct. That is correct.
That could change our student assignment plan as we move forward, and each year we decide to do SIG.
As well as the sustainability piece that you have to also provide of how you're going to support that, because this is money that's going to supplement what the school's doing, but you also have to have money that's going to supplement these efforts to show a good faith of matching.
And I think, Jocelyn, you've been in contact with the State Department in reference to some of these questions. Am I right on that?
I have.
And, and by the way, we don't know the actual dollar amounts. We know what the federal pool of dollars is, but we don't know what the actual amount is, because it can be impacted by other districts who also have qualifying schools who are applying. is because it can be impacted by other districts who also have qualifying schools who apply. And so that's going to reduce the amount. We're guessing based on past practice that it's probably around $300,000 a year. That's what we believe, but that's really not, we don't know that for sure because we don't know how many other districts are going to have schools that they apply for.
That's correct. There's an aggregate amount of $2 million for all 256...
The entire state.
Eligible Title I school-wide schools across the state of Nebraska.
But all of those aren't tier-one, though.
All of them aren't tier-one, however, with $2 million, you have a minimum of $50,000 and I think a maximum of about $300,000 per year.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So at this time...
That's all together.
For the whole state.
No, that's for, remember, you're looking at state. Are you...
Oh, my bad. I'm sorry, I'm looking for, I'm looking at the application for a school to apply for SIG grant and it says the limitations on funding are $50,000 to $2 million per school per year.
If, if only one school applied, then you would have...
But there's only one school.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That would only be one school. But if you had 15 schools apply across the state, then clearly the amount would be smaller.
Well, historically, they've given out a significant amount of money across the schools because not many schools are taking advantage of these, but, yeah.
The fact remains that this state will probably still approximately only have $2 million, give or take. There's not going to be any more money.
So at this time, I'd like to ask for a motion to direct staff to apply for the Title I NCLB School Improvement Grant for year one. So from up there, we're just looking at the year one.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so a motion by Ms. Williams and a second by Mrs. Underwood to direct staff to apply for the Title I NCLB School Improvement Grant for year one. Is there any other questions? Mrs. Fay?
Yeah, I just, before we take the vote, I, I came in here with one mindset being I was comfortable applying for the year one grant for Wakanda, not for anything else or approving anything else. But as I sit here and listen to the discussion, I think it's really important before we go ahead that we have a more comprehensive strategy for addressing those lowest-performing schools and thinking about Ms. Williams' comments about being confused about what it is we want, and I just feel like it's, it's, I don't like doing things under the pressure of a timeline like this. It's too short. Just listening to Mr. Vargas and his, you know, professional expertise talk about all of those options that I'm not sure that we're ready to take advantage of, I'm comfortable not supporting the motion so that we can come back with a real plan for all of the tier-one schools, whether they're addressed by a school improvement grant or something else. And that's, that's the piece that's missing is this is one school, what's our plan and how are we going to support it?
Oh, Ms. Williams.
I just, I just want to reiterate the, the point that, again, we had this conversation, we talked about, we didn't want to leave money on the table that we could be used in schools and not, just the whole conversation, it's where are we? I mean, we're still, I mean, I think what we're voting on is the application, we can, we still have to approve the application. Is that correct? So then we would vote on the application, sending the application in. I would rather do that and see what can come from this. I mean, at that point, then we would, I think we would very much know, should we or shouldn't we not submit the application? But for the process and intent of the processes that Mr. Vargas and Mrs. Fay asked, how are we going to get there? I mean, and again, I would hate for us to get accused of leaving money on the table that we could have applied for and that, I think that's what really started this discussion. So let's not forget about that discussion. And the motion is to ask them to, you know, do the, apply, do the application process and that we have that final say of submitting. So I just want us to kind of be mindful and remember that piece also.
Roll call, please. Okay, sorry, I didn't see your hand. Go ahead.
I'm just going to state this again. Turnaround succeeds when you do strong community stakeholder, you, you work with stakeholders in decision-making, you create a strategic plan for it. It is, it is long-term, it is sustainable. It also considers about resource allocation and reallocating those resources to building staff to be able to take on this work, so we're not overextending additional staff that are already doing this type of work. And that we will be scrutinized to the level that which we improve this one school in this year. There will be studies done on the effectiveness with which how we, how we improve the school. There are studies right now on some of the districts that took advantages three years ago, four years ago. The reason why I'm saying put it off a year is not, I think to, to Ms. Williams is I believe I don't want to leave money on the table. That doesn't mean I want to pick up all this money without actually thinking strategically how we're going to use it, because that's actually what I would never, as a consultant, I would, I would tell a district to not do that. I'll tell a district to create the plan, create the strategy, engage the community, engage everybody, then use the plan to then drive how we're going to use the money, not the other way around. And that's going to be a very detrimental practice if we do that with something that we have not embarked upon to this, to this magnitude ever. I'm, I'm pulling up the board members to really think about that when we're making this vote because it is, this is more than just leaving money, this is about long-term, sustainable, taking advantage of money. And we can do that next year with a more comprehensive plan, working with our, our departments more effectively and the community.
Ms. America.
I just kind of wanted to point out, I just, can you, what is our current motion that we have right now?
I believe, well, Mr. Ray, can you read that back?
It was specific to apply for year one.
For year one, okay. For the Wakanda, okay. And the reason I ask that is because I know, I'm hearing us question whether or not we're even going to apply at all. And at our last meeting, we passed a motion giving staff permission to move forward with applying. And I guess I, yes, we did. And we request them to come back to give us the direction specifically of what schools they were wanting to apply for. I agree, I mean, I would, this, what Ms. Williams said, I would love to see an application developed and brought back to us for us to have a final yes, no vote on before it's submitted. I think that's what I heard you saying. And I think from what I've seen of the timeline, we have time to do that. Mr. Evans is nodding slightly.
Just a quick reminder, people would please use their microphones. That would be helpful.
I did use mine.
I wasn't, I was looking at the super.
Okay, so did we already vote on this very thing or last time? Can someone clarify for me? Was the motion...
The motion last time was I move to approve OPS staff applying for the school improvement grant.
Okay. So maybe this is more of an information item on which school is being applied for?
Do we need...
To make a motion related to that? I'm looking to Megan. I mean, we've, if we've already made the motion and had it approved to apply, I think we're, I think we can move forward.
Can I make a, if somebody's willing to withdraw the amendment, I'll make a motion, if somebody's willing to draw their motion, I'll make a motion hopefully to clarify this and get it approved so we can move forward. And if not, we can go back to the regular motion if they're willing to withdraw.
Okay, so Ms. Williams, was your motion?
Sure, I'll withdraw.
Withdraw.
I move to approve the application, the completion of the application for Wakanda Elementary School for the SIG grant. It's really just the application process, the completion of it. It's going to come back, I did not include in my motion, I'm sorry, I did not include in my motion the submittal. I said the completion of the application for Wakanda Elementary.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. So there's a motion to approve the completion of the application for Wakanda for the Title I NCLB School Improvement Grant by Mr. Wayne, a second by Ms. Williams. Roll call, please.
America.
Aye.
Scanlon.
Aye.
Snow.
No.
Underwood.
Aye.
Vargas.
No.
Wayne.
Abstain.
Williams.
Aye.
Fay.
No.
Godding.
Aye.
Five, oh, sorry, Scanlon.
He, he already said aye.
Did you already vote? I'm sorry.
Yeah, he already said aye. Five, three, one.
I'll go aye again.
So how many do we have now? We have...
Five, three, one.
Well, Scanlon gets more votes. Yeah.
Okay. So does the motion carry, Mr. Ray?
That's five aye, two no, three no and one abstention.
All right, motion carries. We are going to move to J2D legislative positions. Mrs. Fay. Change to Mr. Scanlon.
Obviously, I shouldn't listen to you.
Don't listen to me. I just got kicked off the internet trying to pull up my meeting. Legis, so the legislative team met on Saturday and the document that you have has all of the bills that have some sort of, that OPS could have some interest in. We didn't discuss every single bill. We, the ones that are highlighted in yellow are the bills that we discussed. They're either listed as monitor, support, or oppose. There are some that say monitor with research. I can tell you, and maybe Mrs. Neela Sprash would want to address some of those. I know that we already have some information back regarding LB 248. And then there are some statements that say oppose or support based on the statement that we voted on last time regarding TOSA or the statement that we voted on last time regarding the learning community. So what I would do now is turn it over to Mr. Lindsay and Mrs. Neela Sprash, but I also want to say before there's any action, if there's any of these positions or any other bill that the committee didn't discuss that a board member wants to pull out for discussion or to separate from action on the recommendations from the committee, that that's fine as well.
Madam President, I don't know if you want me to just answer questions or how you want to do it.
I, I think let's do that. How about let's do this? If there's specific legislative pieces that are highlighted in the yellow, which we need to take a vote on this evening, if, if you want those pulled off to discuss separately and you don't have any other questions about the other ones, let's go ahead and pull those off and, and then have a motion for all the highlighted items that aren't pulled off. Is that fair? And then we can talk through the ones that we pull off?
In addition, if there's any that we, that aren't highlighted that they want to pull off.
Right.
So you're not restricted to just pulling off the highlighted ones.
Correct.
Those are just the ones that we discussed.
Right. So if you have another one that you want to talk about, so if you have specific ones, how about if we go through those right now? Does anyone have any specific that they want to pull off? Go ahead, Mr. Wayne.
Just try to speed this process up. I make a motion to approve the legislative positions that are before us minus, and I'm going to subtract out the ones that I'm pulling off, and then anybody wants to add an amendment to that to subtract another one, go ahead and I won't object to it as, as, as a, as the introducer. So I make a motion to approve the legislative positions that are currently before, before us minus LB 351, LB 448, LB 616, LB 617.
Okay, are there any other, before we have a second, are there any other legislative bills that you want to pull off, that anyone wants to pull off? Okay? If not, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Williams. So motion by Mr. Wayne to approve, and your motion was for the highlighted items, correct, Mr. Wayne?
Correct.
For the highlighted items except for LB 351, 448, 616, and 617. Is there discussion, Mr. Scanlon?
I guess I just have a question. So by taking those, what, five, four bills off, you're saying just no stance on them whatsoever?
We'll vote on those individually.
We'll, we'll, yeah.
We'll come back.
Okay.
We'll, we'll have Mr. Lindsay talk about them, then we'll vote on each of those individually.
Okay, thank you.
Because I assume they were highlighted.
Right, I was just trying to speed up the process for Mr. Scanlon's benefit.
No, that's good. Roll call, Mr. Ray.
I'm sorry, Ms. Underwood.
No, that's okay.
Gosh, I am tired, Ms. Godding. I did, I want to point out, oh, never mind, he pulled that one off.
Yep. Okay. Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Ray.
Thank you. I'm going to start with Mr. Scanlon.
And only give him one vote?
Yes.
You can finish with me, too.
Yeah, exactly. Scanlon.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Underwood.
Aye.
Vargas.
Aye.
Wayne.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Fay.
Aye.
Godding.
Aye.
America.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Okay, motion carries. Let's go to LB 351.
LB 351, I'm sorry.
I might not have an argument here because I think I just wrote this number down, I didn't pay attention. Statewide distribution. If you really want to talk about it, I'm in agreement with it, I just wrote down the wrong number.
Okay, so is there a motion to approve LB, the position that the legislative committee is recommending on LB 351?
Some moves.
Second?
Second.
Okay, so motion by Mr. Wayne, second by Ms. Williams to approve the position that the legislative committee is making on LB 351. Is there any discussion, Mr. Scanlon?
Could we have some further explanation of that, of that bill, please?
Yes, the, part of the state aid that's distributed is what's called allocated income tax. That is a, a, under current law, it's a portion of income tax that is set aside and distributed, distributed to districts statewide, both equalized and non-equalized districts would get some part of that allocated income tax. Right now, it is a specified, a specified amount that is appropriated to that purpose. What this would do is to, would say, we're going to set aside 20% of the income tax generated, which would be a significantly larger amount that would be distributed to all districts, both equalized districts and non-equalized districts across the state. And if I remember right, that one, there's several bills that deal, deal with the allocated income tax. I believe this one would send it out based upon where that income was derived. So if, if the income came from OPS, that's where it would go. If it came from another... I believe this one would send it out based upon where that income was derived. So if the income came from OPS, that's where it would go. If it came from another school district, that's where their portion would go, rather than as under the current, which is a limited amount intended to get some state aid to all districts.
Mrs. Fay.
The opposition came from knowing that our property tax is disproportionate, that we just don't have the property tax base, that probably our income tax is also disproportionately low, although we wanted more research on it because we thought it was, we just weren't sure. We hadn't run the numbers yet. I'm sure Mr. Ray is running them right now.
And I believe that in the committee, there were also issues raised as far as, I think Ms. America mentioned that there were folks in her district who thought they were in Bellevue. It's self-reported. When you do your Nebraska 1040, you fill in the box for which school district do you live in. So it's a self-reporting. We don't know if there's a verification process of that to make sure that the right school district's being used. And this is the data that presumably they would use to distribute those dollars. If there's people who live in OPS, in Ms. America's district, who were possibly self-reporting to the IRS, just mistakenly believing they were living in a different district, that would throw off what those numbers mean. Question of whether, if people understood that if they optioned their kids into another district, does that change their school district? Or do they understand that it's a district residence? And I think that's why there was some question about whether more research was needed. It's a significant change. So before supporting something like that, whether we needed more research to find out what the appropriate position would be. And then secondarily, it is disequalizing. It's regardless of resources, resources per child or per student, it would send money out. If you have a, if your levy is 50 cents, you'd still get the allocated income tax. If your levy is a dollar five, you'd still get that same proportional amount. So it's irrelevant to what the resources are to a, in Omaha, we're pushing up against the levy limit and have nowhere else to go versus those that might have a much lower levy participating.
If there's no other questions, roll call, Mr. Ray.
Snow.
No.
Underwood.
Aye.
Vargas.
Call the question again, please. I don't think, I don't think-
Oh, okay. This is the one that we just got done discussing, LB 351, right? Mr. Scanlon.
I guess, is the motion to support the stance that the legislative committee has taken? I think that needs clarification.
Okay. So the motion was to support the position that the legislative committee took, which was to oppose with research. So an aye supports the legislative committee position. So let's go ahead and start over.
Okay.
So that we clearly understand what the motion is.
Okay. Snow.
Yes.
Underwood.
Aye.
Vargas.
Yes.
Wayne.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Fay.
Aye.
Godding.
Aye.
America.
Aye.
Scanlon.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Okay. Motion carries. Let's go to LB 448.
Just a point of order, 433 was the one I wanted to pull off. 431 was the one I wanted to pull off, but I didn't. So I'm against it, but I still voted yes so I could live with it. Moving to LB 448. I move that we approve a position of monitor and research rather than support in principle.
Second.
Any discussion?
I think that, my guess is that the committee is probably okay with that because this was not, support in principle is just maybe another way of saying monitor and research. But we're, our discussion was that we were not opposed to a further exploration of the concept of merger.
So our, correct. So our position was, we weren't going to oppose it. We wanted to understand more about the specific legislation, which we understand the senator is not anticipating getting through this year. Do you want to give us a little?
Yes, that's correct. What the sponsor of the bill is the chair of the retirement committee, wanted to explore that concept. The bill that was introduced is maybe not a shell bill, but a bill that is intended to put the issue out there of should the two systems be merged? And if so, then the rest of that would be filled in. The bill itself would have places, for example, XX instead of a certain percentage, those types of things that are intended to be developed as it's being worked out. So I, they, I think at least at some point, I think the legislature would like to get the point of view of this board, of where they are on the concept.
I do want to point out when we were at the Nebraska Association of School Boards that, and I'm just looking for it, the discussion that specifically came around the retirement fund pointed out that there was a projection that the Empers Teachers Fund would be 100% funded by 2020, which is five years away, and that in 10 years, there would certainly be the opportunity to look at whether or not it was maybe a little too overfunded or where they were at. That particular, the Empers is currently sitting at 91% market value funded against the liabilities. OSERS is currently sitting at about 74, 75% funded. And I believe we're looking at an OSERS funding of somewhere around 25 years. So this one certainly is anticipating being fully funded in five years. So those I know have been some of the questions that have certainly come to me related to this particular piece, specifically related to the funding of Empers over OSERS. And that's been some of the discussion I know that we've had, both at the OSERS table and at this table as well. So I guess I think that Senator Nordquist would probably anticipate wanting to understand a little bit more of what we were monitoring. So if that's what we're, if that's the direction we're moving in, I would think that in legislative committee, we might want to have some discussion around that piece of information.
Do we have a hearing date?
No. It's not yet been set. My guess would be sometimes towards the end of the month.
And we have another committee meeting on Friday?
Correct.
So we can further discuss it in committee on Friday.
Okay.
The-
Go ahead.
The point of my motion is that currently the way, and I have not read the bill in detail, I skimmed it, but it appears to me that employees would move over to Empers, but our debt would still stay with Omaha Public Schools. And I look at it as social security. When we have less in the workforce paying into it, it's harder to pay out as people retire. That money has to come from somewhere. And so I'd be more inclined to support a bill that either is going to take all the debt with it. But if we have to, if we're still, when I say we, Omaha Public School Board is still responsible for that debt, we should still have some say in what goes on. So the reason I said monitor and research is because there could be amendments, there could be some things that is cleared up, but if it's a discussion bill, then let's have a discussion. But I think to say to support in principle is saying we're supporting the merger, and we don't know the impact of that completely. Right now, I will say this, that we are a Class V school district, and there's concerns that the only thing that keeps us legit is our retirement system. And what I mean by legit, if you look at the recent Supreme Court decisions regarding closed class, right now, nobody else can ever become a Class V school. We are a definition of a closed class. But nobody wants to touch that ball because of the retirement system we have, because it opens up a whole different ball of wax. So we're talking about, there could be complex litigation, there could be all types of stuff from retirees if we don't understand that. But if we come out and say we support in principle and not have a full conversation about how it works and what work and what is and isn't in the bill, I think that can be detrimental to us as we move forward in trying to build relationships among staff, teachers, and everywhere else, and even retirees.
So to your point, I do think it's important to remember that no matter if it goes with Empers or if it was with OSERS, the Omaha taxpayer is still responsible for some portion as long as there's, as long as there isn't 100% funding of all systems that we're in. So, but I think those are good questions to have for Senator Nordquist, and also what is in the, what provisions would be allowed if that were to take place? How does that Class V status work? And is there additional, you know, legislation that could create a Class V without the school district having its own retirement systems? Those are all discussion questions. Mr. Scanlon.
In the summary, the last sentence says the bill is intended to begin a discussion of merger of the two systems. Is that correct?
Yes.
I mean, supporting it or opposing it or monitoring, researching, we're not voting that, yes, we want to start to move forward to have OSERS merge with Empers. We just would like to begin discussions of a possible merger in the future.
Yeah. I believe the intent is to, if there is interest in that, to start, to, over the summer through an interim study process, to start looking at what issues, obstacles, what types of things have to be addressed in order to reach that. Certainly, the question of unfunded liability would be an issue. Everything from cutoff dates, when do you start? And there's quite a bit that has to be done when one system takes over another as far as how to handle retirement benefits that are being paid or will be paid in the future and those types of things. So that, the bill is a work in progress and intended to get that, exactly to get that discussion started.
I guess my concern is if we don't support in principle, how does the discussion get started? How do we, how do we move forward? So that's my concern, is that it's not intended to be a bill that, you know, goes into effect this year in any way, shape, or form. But to start the conversation with the senator and with whoever else is involved, I still feel like it needs to be supported in principle, just so that the discussion can begin, which I think has to be something that happens from this table and not necessarily just coming out of the legislative committee. So that's where I am at on that particular piece. But I think your motion, tell me the wording of your motion.
I put to monitor and neutral. And if I may, again, support in principle, we are making the statement when we do this, we're supporting in principle the merger, and we're making an uninformed decision. Even if it's a conversation starter, monitor and research is a conversation starter. We're going to monitor, we're going to research more about it, we're going to come back to the board and present with something. But are we really ready to say publicly, we're supporting a merger in principle? That's what we're saying right here, support in principle. That means we're supporting a merger in principle, and we haven't had an in-depth discussion of what that means, nor has our voters, nor has people, I mean, staff. That's who we're affecting. And I don't know if we want to say that as a board without having a full conversation with people. That's why I'm saying monitor and research, and I'll stand by my position, it should be monitor and research, not even support in principle, because we're saying we're supporting in principle a merger.
Okay. I think roll call, please.
Underwood.
I'm sorry. Can you clarify what we're voting on?
So Mr. Wayne's motion was to change support in principle to monitor and research.
Thank you. Um, aye.
Vargas.
Aye.
Wayne.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Fay.
Aye.
Godding.
No.
America.
Aye.
Scanlon.
No.
Snow.
Aye.
Seven aye, two no.
So motion fails. Moving on. Oh, motion carries. Yeah. Motion carries. Sorry. Moving on to, sorry, I'm getting tired, too. Six, LB 616.
616 is the Independent Public Schools Act that, it's the same bill that was introduced last year. The summary kind of lays it out, but it is what was discussed by the board last year. Be happy to try to answer the questions.
And because we've already had a long conversation about the opportunity schools, and unless somebody changed their mind, I'm making this vote in support of the legislative, even though my stance is going to be different, so we can, we can move forward. I don't think it's healthy for us to have a huge charter school debate. Everybody knows where to stand. We've already had this. And the speediest of time, I think it's just, we vote and we move forward on this issue. So I move to support the legislative position regarding LB 616.
Is there a second?
Second, but I want to clarify.
Okay.
You want to support the position of oppose.
Yes. But I'm going to vote differently, but I'm moving, I'm trying to move this forward.
I hear you. A second, yes. Okay. Roll call, please.
Vargas.
No.
Wayne.
No.
Williams.
Aye.
Fay.
Aye.
Godding.
Aye.
America.
Aye.
Scanlon.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Underwood.
Aye.
Seven aye, two no.
Motion carries. Okay. LB 617, Working to Improve Nebraska Schools ACT.
This is a bill that was introduced last year. There are some, a couple of minor changes to it, but fundamentally, it's the same bill that would require reading intervention at the K-3 level.
Again, in the essence of time, I move to support, I move to adopt, I like the word adopt better. I move to adopt the legislative position that is recommended by the committee before us for LB 617.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Wayne to adopt the legislative position for 617, second by Mrs. Fay. Did you have a comment?
Yes. I just wanted to point out, the reason I will be voting against this position is that we currently are awarding gold and silver. That means we're also identifying low performing or lower performing schools. And I think it's fair, as long as we continue to promote our choice, we give, we give parents information about the schools they're choosing to go to and give them whatever scale. Don't always agree with everything in the bill, but that's why I'll be voting no.
Mr. Scanlon.
I'd just like to hear from a member of the legislative committee why they, why the committee is recommending oppose.
Go ahead, Lacy.
I don't know that I speak on behalf of the full committee, but I can give you a brief overview of things that I think I've said to the committee and said last year. One, the whole bill is essentially an unfunded mandate that would be, the state government would be placing on school districts because they're saying, add these programs, add these programs, add these interventions. These classes have to be taught by master teachers, who there are not enough in the state to teach the classes that you would have to have. And there's no funding for those mechanisms that they're requiring districts to add. That's one issue. Another issue is that issue with the, having to have master teachers teaching specific programs, and we don't, we literally don't have enough in the state to do that essentially at this time. There's also, there is a lot thrown in- There's also, there is a lot thrown into this bill. It creates the recognition program, it does have the third grade retention piece, it sets up intervention programs. I'm trying to find the other piece, or I'm looking at it right now. It sets alternative certification for teachers, not specifically related to reading teachers, but teachers in any subject area, with alternative path to certification that may or may not require prior experience in a classroom, before they walk in to teach in a classroom in the first day. Which is something that I have personally a major issue with, when our local colleges, teachers' colleges are looking at increasing the amount of practicum in student teaching that their students are doing before they enter into their actual teaching profession. If anyone would like to add anything that I'm missing.
You did a good job. Mr. Vargas.
I'm also going to be voting no for this. I think, you know, I think you actually raised very strong issues. I mean, they're real concerns that I do have with the bill, but I think, when I think about setting the expectation that our parents, our parents, no matter where they are, deserve a level of transparency on where their students' reading levels are, and that they deserve a level of support and follow-up. And there is accountability around that, I think is what I really support about this bill. I agree, we don't have enough master teachers, but saying that we need them will influence and change the behavior of districts. I think that influencing and changing the behavior of districts to say, well, then we need to figure out what are, what we do to get more master teachers within these types of programs, is the right type, right direction for me. And for alternative certification, I mean, I was alternatively certified as a teacher within New York State. I think what you find is, there is no one type of teacher that is an amazing, excellent teacher, but when you expand the talent pipeline, and when you provide alternative pathways for individuals that have proven themselves both either academically or have leadership potential, and have held to a high bar for not just allowing anybody to come into the classroom, you find that you are creating a stronger talent pipeline for people to come into the classroom, and for people that normally wouldn't consider education as a pathway. I was a biology teacher, my major, and I didn't go to education school. That didn't stop me from becoming a teacher, becoming instructional coach, or still staying in the education sphere. I think that there are benefits to continuing to research and look into that. And I think the same thing applies for our school leaders, creating school leader pipelines. Currently, our school leaders have to go through and have to get a certification with the Nebraska Department of Ed. There are some waivers, but I think we need to look at alternative certification pathways for our administrators. Expanding the town, our talent pool is a key priority when we think about turning around schools and turning around our district.
Okay, roll call, please. So, the motion is to adopt the position of Legislative Committee for LB 617, just to clarify.
Wayne.
What's the word for no? Nay. I was trying to think of the proper way, sorry, no.
Williams.
Aye.
Fay.
Aye.
Godding.
Aye.
America.
Aye.
Scanlon.
No.
Snow.
Aye.
Underwood.
Aye.
Vargas.
Nay.
Six aye, three no. Nays.
Three nays, motion carries.
Triple nay.
Goodness. Okay, in the essence of time, I'm going to table J2B Committee of the Whole Policy 8150 to the next board meeting.
I just want to ask the Legislative Committee and our contracted professional services, before we left Legislative Position, that on Friday, could they bring to Legislative Committee LB 370? That has something to do with dyslexia, and I just want to make sure it doesn't impact our schools, because it wasn't on the list that we have.
Okay. We also asked for LB... Sorry.
236, maybe.
Correct, 236.
Yeah, 236, LB 236, which is also not on our list, so we'll be discussing that one. If you have any other bills that you don't see on the list, or that we haven't discussed, that you want us to discuss further, please let Mr. Ray know, so we can let Mr. Lindsay know and be prepared for Friday's discussion.
Okay, with that, you have a receipt of reports, OPS Secondary Accreditation External Reviews for 2015, and we will have the motion for closed session.
I move that the Board of Education go into closed session for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the Superintendent, Secretary to the Board, and Legal Counsel, Personnel, and Negotiations.
Let me remind the board that the purpose for closed session is for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the Superintendent, Secretary to the Board, and Legal Counsel, Personnel, and Negotiations. There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. America, motion by Ms. Williams, roll call, please.
Williams.
Aye.
Fay.
Aye.
Godding.
Aye.
America.
Aye.
Scanlon.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Underwood.
Aye.
Vargas.
Aye.
Wayne. Nine a.
Motion carries, let the record reflect that the board went into closed session at 10:49 PM.
In this edition of The Spotlight, there are many ways to honor veterans who have risked their lives to serve this country. Find out how a group of Benson JROTC students are saluting those